Follow the reading. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance. So we have our track team here tonight, but we'll go through the approval minutes and put all accounts. If there's no objections, we'll move them up on the agenda so they can get out of here. So, so next up is approving the minutes of May 20th, 2024 and June 6th of 2024.
So moved.
Any corrections, additions or otherwise? Hearing that, all in favor of approving the minutes of May 20th and June 6th? Next, we have approval of the roll accounts dated May 30th, 2024 in the amount of $350,146.99 and dated June 13th, 2024 in the amount of $146,784.14. Do we have a motion to approve the rolls?
So moved.
Motion by Steve. I'm sorry, you can go. Karen, step aside. Any discussion questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving those rolls as presented? All right, so if there is no objection, I might move up on the agenda, the recognition of the boys, Class C Track State Champions, again. What was it, two years ago?
Yep, 17, 20, 24.
All right, because when you have the indoor track, that brings us it all up. It's a laugh, it seems, but think upon, plenty often we've seen it done, so that's great. So Jim, if you'd like to say a few words about the track team and their season, well.
Before I turn it over to Ken, I would like to thank everyone in the team for great seasons, great coaching staff, takes it's goal to win. That Saturday down the Spanish at St. Joe's was an awesome day. We really highlighted some great athletes and I just want to thank you all for participating. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Kenny because you can talk about your team.
Oh gosh.
Usually I can be very blunt. I'm in summer mode. I've been out since, I've been more a week now. Just a quick recap of the season. So we do what we do, I guess the kids are buying into our program. Luckily, like I said before, we have some of, not just the best athletes, but the best students in the building. What happens inside the building is obviously far more important than what happens outside the building. So their efforts in the classroom exceed the standard if we look at our GPA compared to many other sports. Just in general, we had a great day for KBACs. I think our boys came in second. And then states, obviously, I, it wasn't our best performance to be truthful, but we found a way to win. And came out, you know, we had some kids, a lot of first time people this year participate and find their way to the big championship. The only thing I didn't like about the championship is there was no wifi, so I can't keep track of points as close as I normally do. We squeaked that one by around four points or something like that. We also, I know he's not here tonight, but we also graduate 40 points. I mean Joey's pretty special. Among, you know, among many others, but Joey ended up putting us in probably the best position we could be in by wrapping up 40 points. So just under half of our total points for the day. Also setting two state records, two KBAC records in the meantime. So just a phenomenal day by the, by the boys. Obviously my coaching staffs, I'd like to consider one of the best in the state. This doesn't happen by accident. So they, they make me, you know, talent's great, but they, they make me look really good, so. Kudos to the team. All I got for you. Usually I give you big numbers, but I'm not gonna.
Did you want me to stay up and help call names for you?
Yeah, that'd be great. And I'll say a couple of things first, I guess. So I do want to, on behalf of the board, I wanted to congratulate the track team on their state championship. We really enjoy doing these things. For the seniors that, it was only a few days before graduation. They won the state meet, so they got their medallions on class night, so they could have them at graduation. And you guys will have them, you know, earlier, so you'll have them when your graduation comes rolling around. But yeah, no, I think it's, it's great to see kids be successful. And what you said as far as inside the building, outside the building, I think it all does work together. You know, kids that are participating in sports and other curriculars, extracurricular activities of all types. I think it helps a lot with giving the kids motivation and a good reason to be at school, get connected to their school and their community, their school community and their fellow students and teachers and coaches and such. And I think that helps everybody be successful in and outside of the building as part of their, their time here at Winslow. So definitely want to recognize that because it all does work together, so. So, all right, we've got a whole bunch of these. I don't know if everybody's here, but we'll.
Yeah, I'm missing you.
Buy these things by the case here, right? So apparently you guys got a lot of shoes to focus, some, well, you have.
Some big shoes to focus.
Pair of shoes in particular. But. So yeah, I guess.
So first we'll do Hassan Habe. He actually won the 110 hurdles and so he gets two medals. Congratulations.
All right, congratulations. So you get one for your individual event.
You need to get two more next year.
No pressure, no pressure. And the ones for the team championship, so great.
Yeah, I'm Bertie Gillette.
Congratulations.
Ethan McAsland.
Strong like dad, tough like mom.
Congratulations, good job.
Congratulations, sir.
Spicer.
Redfries.
Yes, sir. Lori Barry Spalding.
Good job. Rain Court. Elliot Step. Good job.
I don't know why I'm drawing a blank on your last name.
Yes, I knew that.
Coach Ken Pellerin. We'll get him, we'll get him.
Get one, two.
All right, come on. Cameron, I don't want to put your last name. Yep, that. Coach Andrew Fornier.
A part of the team.
Great, thank you, sir. Coach Kyle Dewey. I have a lot left.
All right. Is everybody here?
No, I'm missing a bunch, I'm sorry. I went by missing.
Joey.
All right, we got to talk with Jim, you're missing. So let us know how many you're missing.
We'll make sure we stir up.
All right. Again, congratulations. Don't feel you need to hang around and listen us for the rest of the evening, so. Only if you're gonna hang around in that, can you leave.
That is a better one.
Yeah. All right. Get to all the other functions. All right, reported committees. You have any committee reports? I'm done, all right? All right. Any sort of report, so Mrs. Gatt.
Let me pull up my notes, they're on my phone. So good evening, everyone. So before I tell you about some of the, I'm gonna just turn this a little bit because it got turned. Before I tell you about some of the end of the year events at WES, I wanted to give a few thank yous. I feel like sometimes we get so busy that we forget to tell people that we appreciate them. So I wanted to take a minute to thank the board for their unwavering support. As I know the last few months have been difficult. You, you asked us difficult questions as we presented our budgets and then trusted us as professionals that we've worked hard to present the needs of our building for our students. And I truly appreciate your support and the work that you do to ensure that our students have the education and support that they need. And I wanted to make sure I said that to you because I know it's been challenging and I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate all the support. Thank you, so thank you very much. I also wanted to take a minute to thank Tom, Kyle and Peter and the entire WES staff for all of the work they had to do. Because I had to be out for parts of May and June. It's never great to be out when you are an educator. Certainly not in May and June because there's a lot going on. So it was a very good feeling to know that I was working with amazing supportive team. And honestly, I didn't really have to worry a whole lot while I was out, so thank you. Very much appreciate it. Okay, so now, the end of the year was very busy at WES. We completed our final round of student spotlight assemblies, which included highlighting 75 amazing students. We also had a very successful field day that was spearheaded by our PE teacher Lori Tyler, our social worker Sabrina Vassal and literacy specialist Andrea Brighden. And that event, I don't know if you've ever been around in the last couple of years, but that event has really morphed into something that the kids really, really enjoy. And one of the, the great strengths that Field Day now has is that it utilizes the activities and games and, and things that are taught throughout PE. So it's not just these one and done kind of things that they have to get all the directions and learn all the things, all that. It's, it's things that they've had the opportunity to do from PE with, with some additional things like tug of war. We did have the fire department come and visit us on our field day. And they went and helped one of the groups with our, when they were on the tug of war, so. I don't know who won, I don't want to get in the middle of that, but it did happen, so. Our sixth grade also got to go to the junior high for their step up day and they had their end of the year field trip. They also did a walk through on the last day of school, so everybody got to cheer for them from our building and, and say our goodbyes to them as they walked through our building. And our K5 students also got to visit their new teachers and a meet and greet on the last day. Kindergarten had on their last day and then grades one through five had on the last day of school. We also did a kindergarten screening for 63 incoming kindergarteners. So it was a very busy but successful end of the school year. And now we are gearing up for our three week summer program running from July 9th through the 26th, the 40th.
Any questions?
Are you feeling better?
I'm starting to feel better, yes. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Very good, thank you. Tom, have anything to add? Go to, we don't have Jason, so I guess.
I'll report for Jason tonight. I'm not exactly sure where he went in, but he sent me his report that he wouldn't be here, so I'll be sharing the junior high report tonight. Again, thank you all for your support, as Erica said, throughout the year. Pretty much everything that goes on doesn't happen without you guys, so certainly appreciated. So the junior high closed up the school year with three different assemblies. Students were recognized in the seventh grade assembly for outstanding character and academic achievement. The eighth graders were also recognized just after their assembly in their own, for the same, same topics, character and academic achievement. Then they concluded the year with our all school assembly, where 39 students were recognized with Renaissance awards and sweatshirts, which meant they achieved the honor roll for at least seven out of the eight quarters during their years in junior high. And also the Whittaker Award, which is given each year, was given to eighth grader Jack Flaherty, who was voted on by all of the staff. And then Mrs. Burgoyne finished things off with her slideshow of pictures of the students who wrote something, it's great. We'd like to wish our staff that are retiring or pursuing other adventures the best of luck with their future endeavors. And we've been conducting interviews over the last few weeks to try to land the best quality individuals for our open positions. A couple, I believe, will be voted on tonight in appointments. So thank you for listening to that for that. And again, thank you all for your continued support. Unless you have any questions, that'll wrap up the junior high school year.
Any questions? Mark and Warren.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bell.
Want to be brief? You're welcome.
Well, you're gonna.
I'm gonna thank you too, Tom.
Jim and I have something we want to talk about, so I want to save my time really for that, but. Thank you for, Erica, for, you know, giving the thank you to the board. I, I want to thank the whole community for their support of our students, especially come graduation time. This year I was able to actually join in the parade and drive around and see the support that our kids get from community members as they do their final kind of parade through the town. And the support is phenomenal. We really do have a great community. Graduation at Colby was awesome. I think the weather was perfect. You know, we started a new tradition, I think it was last year, because the rain kind of forced us to stay inside after the graduation, where we invited everybody down to the floor to then just welcome back the newest alumni to Winslow High School. And it started a new tradition, rather than go out to the lawn, it just made it more intimate. The, the stage was still there, parents could get pictures on stage, it was really, it, it's, it's been a nice addition. We are also in hiring a math teacher, a French teacher and a life skills teacher and reviewing applications to get the best person for our kids possible. That's kind of where we're at. Welcome on, Summer. Thank you, and you'll hear more from me later on.
Mr. Burgoyne.
I'm gonna be speaking with Mrs. Bell, so.
Well, that, this is our time.
Oh, this is our time.
I should have just called him up.
So this spring, we have, I brought to the athletic council, which makes up, which is made up of all our coaching staff, a policy that, that we feel may be unfair to, to a student. Currently, when a student gets their second substance abuse violation, they're turned away for a year with no support of any type. And we just felt that was too harsh. Because really, if you're gonna try to help a student, you just say, don't come back in a year, are you really giving them a chance to, with, with the issues they had? So we proposed the policy we're sending to you, which would basically say, the student will still have a punitive punishment of 40% of the schedule. And Chad has made it so you can see what it would be for, for all the sports. But they'd be allowed to stay with their team, their coaching staff, their peers, and give them a chance to, to work on whatever their, their situation is. Because again, if we don't do this, we're just sending them out, probably the kids that they're doing, that they're doing, the things they're with, and we're not giving the opportunity to, give them a chance to, you know, heal from whatever their, their, you know, whatever their issue is. And we feel this is unanimously approved, not unanimously, so there's a couple of coaches who like that little policy, but majority felt this policy was more fair. Again, it still has a punitive piece in it, so it's not like we're saying to the student, oh, it's okay. I'm not saying that, because 40% is a lot, a lot of the season. But it allows them to stay with their students.
So anytime we work with kids, it is our role as a school to educate, right? And, and that would be whether it's math, science, social studies, or educate from, from making back decisions. So a few years ago, we had a situation that wasn't even athletics related, where a question, a parent questioned like, okay, so my kid's being suspended for vaping at school. What is it that you can provide to me as a parent to help my kid? Because I don't know what to do. And my answer was, I don't know, I don't have anything. And that's not a good answer, you know, from the principal and I'm sure for the school board, like, I need to have resources to provide families, right? And so we looked into this product that was called DAVE Educate, which is an online education program, which gave us something. Checks a box saying, yes, we are offering some sort of education to parents and to kids on this. But that's as, only as good as the information that you're taking from that, right? If you take it serious and you have conversations with your parents about it, it could, it could make a difference. But for most kids, it's just checking the box. So we've been looking for, what are other resources? So this is kind of happening as a school while we're looking at this. Actually, after the Fourth of July, I have a, a meeting set up with somebody from Maine General. And they're gonna talk about what are the resources that they're reaching out, where they can do more of a community outreach, working individually with our kids. So let's say, you know, a kid is suspended for vaping at school. Rather than just saying, well, sorry, tough luck, here's an online course, hope you learn better, come back. Oh, you did it again? Oh geez, tough luck, you know, we'll see you in a year. It gives us somebody that we can say, okay, you need to contact this person. This person is gonna work with you and your child to develop an education program, it's more one-on-one. Through the budget process, we ask for more KBH time. So that's, that's one thing that, that we can provide kids that we're working on. The other thing is through KBH services, trying to increase the amount of social work services in the school. Having somebody that's trained in a program, which is what our KBH counselor is going through this summer, gives us another resource, somebody in the building that we can say. So we're adding, you know, not just one program of DAVE Educate, which again, it works-ish. But having two different programs that we can meet with parents and say, okay, here's what you're, you're dealing with as a parent, I know it's gonna be challenging, here are some resources that I feel comfortable that I can offer you. That keeps your kid involved in athletics. And again, it's not rewarding that behavior. It's trying to keep that carrot over them, where they feel entitled to do these types of programs, to get the help that they might need, and not just turn a blind eye on. And I did feel like with the previous policy in the athletic code, it was kind of, yeah, okay, well, yeah, you made a bad choice, see you later. You know, and it didn't offer that help. I feel better as a principal saying, I can offer parent support. Because oftentimes, parents are like, what can I do? What can I do? You know? If you look at this, and I'm not gonna go through everything, I'm gonna give it to you. And if, over the next month, you can review that and get back to us as we're making our final changes to the athletic code, which is part of the student handbook, which you guys will see, should be the August school board meeting. We can make that, but really quickly, so I can identify a few things. Jim went over kind of the first offense. And that's as it is right now. The only thing that we changed, anything on here that's bold and italicized, that's new language going in. Okay, that's, that's where changes are. If there's something that's coming out, it's stricken, it's crossed out. Like I know the board likes to see what policies, so we kind of cross that out. So we added the table, that way it's not a question. If you're on fall cheering and you get in trouble and it's 20% for substance abuse, that's two games, 20% of eight, right? Whereas basketball has 18 countable games, 20% would be four games. Okay, so it's, it's clear upfront, before it had the calculation, but it wasn't really clear, you had to figure out. Now it's, that's what it is. The second offense is really that first on the second page, if you flip it over. That's the first major change where athletes were suspended for one calendar year. We were just saying, see ya, you're done, come back in a year. Well, as all of you can probably guess, a kid who was pushed out for a year is never coming back and they're probably doing whatever they were doing, or worse, with no supports. It's still pretty significant, it's 40% of the NPA season. So again, using those two examples, fall cheering, eight goes to 40%, is four. And, and you might say, that's actually 50%. We always round out. So if the calculation went to 3.4, it went to four. If it went to 3.6, it went to four. So again, it's still pretty significant, but it keeps them involved. It keeps them going to practice where they can be monitored by a coach. The coach can have that relationship building, trying to help them through things while they're going through whatever, maybe with a therapist or a counselor outside. Third violation, the old policy said that a student would be permanently removed for their third violation. I, I'm glad to say I've never had a kid in my 11 years here that ever got to a third violation. So it never really came in, but if we're looking at steps, that's where we would have to suspend them for a calendar year. And then a fourth violation, they would be permanently removed. And Jim, tell me if I'm wrong, but you reach out to a lot of different schools to kind of see what their language is and this is kind of in line with what the schools are doing.
This was, schools had a lot of strict policies, you know, some that were a little lax. This was kind of where the meat of the bone was. Again, when kids play sports, normally the coaches aren't just teaching the sport, the coaches watching their academic progress, is, you know, watching their social progress. And I think when we turned a child up at 365 days, we said, you're on your own. We weren't doing that student a favor. And it really has nothing to do with the athletic performance, it has to do with, you know, winning the business camp for children. And that didn't feel like we were caring for children.
Good question, the KBH piece that you're trying to put in place, would that be mandatory for them to, to meet with somebody after the first offense?
So we're gonna say, hey, here's a series of things that we can offer you?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And you need to do one of them.
Absolutely.
Now, the, the, the coaches wanted this piece in there, but without the K, KHB, you can wait up to a year trying to get into a therapist, so. So that's why we, we have to get this piece to go. Because otherwise, we say to a student, you can't come back to sports until you get to a therapist. It can be six months before you get into a therapist.
No, that.
So we've gotta make sure that we, we get air on the side of caution to the student.
So Maine General, the program they have is a certain program. And that's what I'm meeting with the person, I think it's at the end of July. KBH, the counselor is going through a different training and a different program. And as a school. the school year starts, I'm gonna be meeting with her to find out, okay, what does that program look like? So we can look at, okay, what's better for maybe the first time, and what's maybe better for the second time? What's more intensive? Because it should be a progression, right? Again, Vape Educate is a resource to check the box. Is it the most effective? Probably not.
Right. And that is handled vaping, it doesn't handle any of the other
Correct, correct. And I would say, our number one substance abuse issue that we deal with is vaping, which probably isn't a big surprise to anybody who works with teenagers, or has worked, or has their own in their house, I think that's a teenager thing that we're dealing with.
A couple of things that come to mind for me, first of all, for that, I think it's good to have improved counseling and such on that. I don't know if there's any grant money or other such things to help pay for any additional resources that might be associated with that.
In the Maine General, that's actually, it's through a grant that they're working on, and we're partnering with them with this grant, so
Okay.
Yeah, it's their grant, they're getting the money, and they're saying this is how we can help you with it.
I know there is money for, you know, the tobacco settlement that they use for education, and there's new one, they were just talking today on opioids, where they're gonna spend all, you know, however many millions, I don't know, many millions, but just throwing it out there, obviously, get resources wherever we can.
It's good that there's these resources that are available, it's too bad that it's gotten that bad, that
Right.
The hospitals are saying, hey, we can help out with this, you know, we can go on, I'm this money.
Yeah.
Whereas four years ago, there was, I think it was about four years ago, when that parent asked me that question, it's like, I don't have anything. And that's when we found the Vape Educate, which, again, it helped.
And the only reason I asked about kind of a mandatory piece, as well as the suspension piece, was sometimes parents are reluctant to carry something any farther, so that if there was a piece in place, where they kind of had to have some sort of follow-through that would help the kid out. Sort of my mindset, but I think this is a
And I will say, most of our parents that we talk to when it comes to this, they're, they're, they're asking, like, what can we do? Like, they're, it's not easy raising a teenager.
Did six, I'm all good.
And it's like, parents are like, what can I do? But it's, yeah.
Well, I, I, I like the idea of having more connection versus cutting them off for a year, and I think that's one of the reasons we talked about sports, as far as how it contributes to the school environment, because of those connections that it makes, and helps kids stay on the right path, so.
And I like that it carries from one sport to the next.
Right. Yeah, because that's a question. So one of my questions that I didn't see on here, looking at it quickly, is playoffs. How does that come into the picture?
It's considered probably NPA schedule. So, even though the form was based on regular season, because you can't anticipate if you have playoffs, if a student was ineligible, they still have games to serve, they serve during the playoff, postseason.
And that would count towards
If, if they made it, it would count toward the games they missed, and
Correct.
Their two messes, and
Okay, all right.
Let's just, I don't know if you needed some language to indicate something to that effect, so it's clear for everybody, or maybe I just missed it reading it quickly.
I'm gonna write that down as a note, just to
Because it's gonna come out. Fortunately, we get to the playoffs in many sports often enough, so it's, it's gonna happen.
Playoffs, preseason, and summer, I'll go one step further.
And that might be a good incentive, for the family not to mess up, because you don't wanna miss them.
Well, and that character being enough to say, hey, this is, this is a rule, this is, but not enough where it's like, oh yeah, you can mess up and not do it, it's gotta be a balance.
Right. So, so you mentioned preseason, so that's a question.
They would sit during preseason, they were ineligible.
Okay.
They could practice, but they wouldn't be able to run the games. That's, it goes along with our current policy now.
Yeah, okay, all right. Because I'm curious, because I know, for example, like in football, you know, you'll have to have some games before you get to full contact and things like that too, so it sets them back for the regular season, because they just
Because he practices football, so it's just, five days of contact, a, a regular practice.
That's
So they would have to sit out their games, be ineligible.
All right.
And for field hockey, it was the same thing.
Okay. And also, of course, there are different rules.
They do.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure we're kind of covering the bases, and we're not leaving things to variation, and, you know, consistency is important, so everybody knows what the expectation is, so, but I think it's a good step in the right direction with my initial thoughts on it.
I have a question. The language here says they can't be in the presence of alcohol and tobacco, assuming some children have tobacco and alcohol in their home, right? Is that, am I reading that wrong, or?
Yeah, home use would not be, like, if it was a parent drinking a beer, and somebody took a picture of the parent drinking beer, and the kid sitting there, that kid wouldn't be. It's when they're with all their friends in there at a party, and
Right, yeah.
I wasn't doing anything while you didn't make the good choice to get out of that.
Okay.
I was in the bathroom in the same stall with my five friends, and
That's what I
That's more what that is.
Headshots is on Facebook.
Yeah, and they post on Facebook, or why they, people see that.
Right.
I can say that hasn't happened before.
Yeah. So, uh, okay. Any other questions?
And again, if you look that over in the next month or so, and you see something, feel free to shoot us an email.
Yeah.
We'll definitely clarify things, or
But don't shoot up.
I think he missed that one.
What's that, sorry?
I said, but don't shoot up.
Thank you. Thank you both.
All right, thank you.
Uh, let's see, um, Shelley. You thought you were gonna go out, slide out the door nice, easy last week, didn't you?
Yeah, I did. Four days? But who's counting? I don't know. Who said I was counting, right? No, I'm excited, my family is excited, it's gonna be, it's, it's another chapter, so I'm excited to start that chapter. We've been busy in the schools already. We've got the sprinkler, large sprinkler repair that started at the elementary school, and to say the least, we're making a miserable mess over there. But it'll be so much better when it's done. Eastern Sprinkler has been wonderful to work with. They, they really helped us be proactive in the building with, and, you know, really bringing us up to speed, what this is gonna consist of, and how we need to handle it and manage it. So, you know, we've been very busy today. Last week, we were busy getting ceiling tiles down. Today, it was a matter of cutting some sheet rock, and opening up the ceilings to get the, the new pipe in, and the new fittings. They started, they pulled a couple of pieces of pipe, and, and as we expected, the bottom of the pipe is full of sludge and nasty rust and stuff, so we're, tomorrow, we'll be draping a lot of plastic around to protect the teachers' belongings, protecting the floor, and the walls, and the tack boards, and, so it, it's a, it's a big project, it's a lot of work, and the guys, so far, they're doing a great job, they really are. And at the same time, you know, they're, they're doing their custodial duties too. So I'm, I'm really proud of them, they're working very, very hard. A week or so ago, I was in the high school, and your new maintenance director was here, and I was kind of walking them around in the buildings, and just kind of showing my buildings off. But we were in the boiler room here at the high school, and I noticed the tank for the hot water heater was kind of leaking, and, so I brought Siemens in, and they've taken a look at it, and evaluated the, the, the tank of the, the domestic hot water, and they found that there is a crack in the tank, that's something that they cannot repair. It's considered a pressure vessel. It's inspected by the main boilers. Every other year, they come in and they do a test on it to make sure that it's certified, that it'll pass inspections, because it is considered a pressure vessel. It is a, is a significant repair. I've had a vendor, one vendor in already to take a look at it. I'm meeting with another vendor tomorrow, and Peter and I are meeting with another vendor on Thursday to have some discussions, because it is such a significant repair. I just don't want to set it in the lap of a single contractor, say, go ahead and fix it. I think we need to do our due diligence, and work with several vendors, to make sure we're doing the right thing, and we're making, you know, the right repair, that we're not just putting a Band-Aid on it, that we're fixing it for the long haul. This, this hot water tank has been there since two thousand and six, so it's, it's lasted well, it's done very, very well. And, and unfortunately, the crack is only about three inches long, but it's ruined the whole tank, you know? The burner's so good on it, I don't know if we can repurpose that, I, I'm really not sure. You know, I don't wanna be too defined with any answers, because anything I told you would be a lie at this point, you know, I couldn't, couldn't pass a straight face test with anything, because there's a lot of unknowns right now, of how we can fix it, what we can do, and how we can do it. But I can promise you that it'll be done right, and it will be done well, and it'll have my stamp on it one way or the other. You know, Corey, he, he's aware of it, I kind of brought him up to speed, he was in Friday for a couple hours, and we worked together, and I kind of brought him up to speed on what's happening with this particular unit. And he said that, you know, he'll keep a good eye on it, and keep track of the project. But it's just one of those things that I wanna make sure that the, the board was aware, because I know it's very time-sensitive, because it does provide the hot water for the domestic of the whole building, which includes the kitchen, bathroom sinks, showers, and such. So, you know, I just want John to be aware of what's going on in the building. But other than that, we're doing great, the, the guys are doing a good job, they're, they're starting to ramp up, and get a lot of the summer work done, and as usual, I know they'll do a phenomenal job here in this building, so I have no doubt in that at all. But it'll, it'll be an exciting new year for you folks, and, and I know Corey will do a great job.
Well, we will, we will surely miss you. You know, the little retirement party that went on, it was great to hear the things that were said there. It was a lot of very heartfelt messages, I think, that were sent, and appreciation for all that you've done over these many years. You know, definitely inclusive of your current job, but for all the other things that you do that go beyond what your job description covers, because surely you've done many things that are beyond that. And even though your job description has as may be required in there, you know, we've, we've definitely stressed the limits of that on occasion, but, you know, during COVID, whatever it's been, since then, hopping on a bus, or whatever it takes, you know, everybody surely appreciates all, all those efforts. You will be missed. You know, Kyle already set the stage, already said, as far as, you know, retired administrators, you know, can always start a bus. And we know you can do that. But, but anyway, you know, that's one, one, you know, you know, if your, your, your husband, you know, wants you to be out the door at four AM or something, you know?
I, I don't think so, so much.
But, you know, been on the go so, so many years, you know, it's gonna be I'm sure an enjoyable adjustment, to get to do some of the things that you, you wanna do in, in your spare time, and not get those phone calls on, you know, Saturday night, wherever you happen to be, at camp or otherwise, so. But we do, do appreciate all that you've done, and I think there was plenty said at, at the final staff lunch last week, that was last week, right? Okay, that was last week. But anyway, do appreciate it, and thank you for all you've done, and we know where to find you, so.
You guys have always been very, very supportive of everything I've done, and, and I couldn't have done the job that I did if I hadn't had that support. So that was always very important to me.
Yeah, well, we definitely appreciate it, and we've been through a lot of projects together, and it's been, been a joy, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Corey's got some big shoes to fill, but
What's that?
Corey has some big shoes to fill, but
Oh, well, you'll do fine.
We have
He, he promised he wouldn't screw it up.
Shelley, I'm still texting you, when somebody texts me and says that they, they can't say it anymore.
I know.
Yeah. So, um, all right. Your, your last report to us, I presume, so, thank you. So, Will, do you have anything for us?
I have a separate agenda item, so I guess I'll do it then.
All right. I'm sure you got nothing going on this summer, it's quiet. All right, so, I think I got all our ministry, very good. Amanda?
Our budget abstract is telling us that ninety-eight point three-six percent of the year has gone by, and ninety-five point seven-seven percent of the budget has been spent out. We do have one final rule of accounts this week, there'll be a fair amount of things on there, and inevitably, some invoices will trickle in a little bit, even after that, that we, we will have to pay. But we are hoping we can end the year. We'll have more exact numbers on how we ended things in August.
Yep. Very good. Any questions for Amanda? All right. Thank you. That should be Peter's report.
Yeah, so this is the time of year when we do a lot of moving around with people, because there are positions that are open or being advertised, people will ask to be voluntarily transferred to those positions, if they're certified, and if they have the proper credentialing, and are a good fit, have seniority with somebody else, and there's just a number of factors that play into it. So we have a few positions like that this evening that I wanna talk to you about. One of them is a request for a volunteer transfer from Greg Chesley, who is currently a specialized teacher in the elementary school. He has requested to transfer to the new dean of students position that we will have this coming year. Greg is an individual who works exceptionally well with, with all kids, and this is, this is a, a position where I think he will excel in, and will be able to work, is the skillset that he has with many students, and help with programming. So we're very excited that he's expressed an interest in that. So we will be advertising for his position next, so it becomes a domino effect when these things start to fall into place. Another transfer that I wanna bring to your attention is a gentleman by the name of Sheldon Ames, who used to work in the elementary school. Sheldon is a current resourceful teacher technician at Tech at Winslow Junior High, and he is requested to be voluntarily transferred to the EdTech III position at the elementary school in the title program. He has worked in the title program before, and so Erica has, has met with him to have a conversation about that, feels like he'll be a good fit, so he'll be awarded that transfer as well. You might recall, last year, the board, you approved the leave of absence for Christine Harrington, she was our pre-K teacher, and she was to let us know if she was going to be returning for this coming year, and she has done that, so Christine will be joining us again as the pre-K teacher. So, this is not a transfer, it's not a hire, it's just, she's coming back, and I just wanted you to be aware of that. Another piece that I think you should be aware of, you saw that Hope Lincoln was an individual who resigned a few of the clubs and activities that she supervised, and Hope was a JMG teacher for the grades six through eight. She has taken another position in another district, but JMG folks have hired somebody by the name of Monica Pauquet, she will replace Hope as the sixth through eighth grade JMG teacher in that program. Approval of the regional calendar. Every year, we have to have the regional calendar approved, and I'll have the letter from the State Department, just quickly, it says, thank you for your submission of your twenty-four It says, "Thank you for your submission of your twenty-four, twenty-five regional school calendar. It included three dissimilar instructional days, which is fewer than a maximum of five dissimilar days permitted by twenty-eight MRS, section forty-eight oh-one. As you know, this is a requirement associated with the issuance of state subsidy. Your twenty-four, twenty-five regional school calendar is hereby approved. We thank you for your efforts to increasingly coordinate your calendars for the benefit of your students." So this is all part of what we were talking about earlier in the year, that we have to align our schedules with other schools that feed into the tech center. And we can't have more than three dissimilar days. Also, with the schedule that we have this year, where the delayed starts, it allows our tech center students to attend both morning and afternoon session when, when we have a delayed start. So that's all good, and that's been approved. And that's, that's very good news for all of our kids. This week, the commissioner has a conference for superintendents and assistant superintendents that takes place. It's a three-day conference. The keynote speaker is Dr. Tony Wagner, who's the author and senior research fellow at the Learning Policy Institute. It also features breakout sessions, which will include legislative updates. I plan on attending the Thursday session. The conference is being held at Bar Harbor this year. And so I'll get as much information as I can on the different things that are happening and bring that back to the leadership team. Speaking of which, our leadership retreat for administrators and directors is going to take place on July eighth. This will be held at Winslow High School, it's a day-long event. This is where we analyze our student data to see the progress that we've made on our goals from the year. We then take our data, and that progress plays a large role to inform us of the next steps as we prepare for the upcoming year at our district leadership retreat, which takes place on the thirteenth and the fourteenth of August. Hard to believe we're already talking about that. July tenth, our administrators and directors will participate in a day-long training in a program called a Regulated Classroom by Emily Reed Daniels. We're being offered this opportunity through a grant-funded project. So the training and the materials, along with any follow-up consultation, is free of charge. Essentially, the program is a framework that reduces the effects of stress and trauma for both our staff and our students in order to increase learning in the classroom. We'll learn about the four core practices and some strategies that we can use to apply those strategies. We then plan on using some of that in, some of our in-service time to share these strategies with all staff members throughout the course of the year. So that's my report at this point. And I, I too want to say thank you to Shelley, because this is her last board meeting, and I echo everything Shelley. Joel has said, Shelley. I'll just add that you have been simply outstanding. Thank you for your years of service.
Any questions for Peter? All right. Very good. Public comment. I don't think we have anybody here for public comment. So for those that might be tuned in online, I will dispense of the reading of the information about public comment and how that works. But at a future time, if you would like to participate in public comment, that information is on our website. And you can always reach out to us by email, particularly over the long summer. That's probably the easiest way to get us if you'd like to provide some public comment to the board. So given that, we'll consider public comment closed, and we'll move on to old business. So the first thing we have up is the second reading of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Winslow School Budget, the amount of twenty million, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and eighty-nine cents. And for our new members, we don't do a second reading until it passes referendum because now we are getting our final passing and making this the official budget for next year. So I will say that the, the process of getting it through the council and referendum was not easy. Hopefully, that is not what we go forward with in future years. But we do, I'd have to say, you know, thank you to all those who worked hard on the budget. Thank you to the public that supported our budget and what we do. We have a history of not asking for things that we don't think are in the best interest of what we need for our schools and the children that come here. And we don't take that lightly. And we try to do the best we can with the resources that we're blessed to be provided to do the job that we do here, so. Again, thanks to all. I don't know, Peter has anything to add before we go ahead and have a motion? Okay? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading of the budget as presented?
No motions.
Motion from Ashley, do we have a second? Karen's all over seconds.
Just call me second.
Any discussion? All right. Not hearing any. Sir?
I'm not sure if that's to be discussed, but the issue with the boiler, is there enough in this budget? You have contingency fund or capital improvement fund? Is that, what are we looking at for the cost of that boiler?
Yep. So the cost of that boiler, we don't know exactly what it is right now. I mean, depending on who you speak to, it could run anywhere from eighty to a hundred-and-twenty thousand. So it's a significant amount of money potentially. What we, you just heard him say that we're finishing on the last, on the, on the last rolls. So we have some things that are still coming in. So we will definitely finish, the budget will definitely finish in the black. So, you know, one of the things that we can look at is if we haven't, if we have some things that, if our expenditures weren't all used up, we could look at the monies that we had in our bond. If you, if you recall, we had monies in our bond. We had about a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars left in that. This, for this year. And we took a hundred-and-ten of that to pay for, for the resurfacing of that track. And then we had used, we were looking at using the other eighty for the work that was being done at the elementary school for the spring, for the, for the pipes. And then we had budgeted twenty. One of the things that we can do is if, is if our expenditures come in the way we think they're going to, we're gonna have some wiggle room there. We could transfer some of those monies that would have been expenditures. We could transfer the, the, those monies back into our bond or we'd draw Shelley's lines so that, that, so the track would come out of Shelley's lines for this particular year. So then we would have that money back in the bond to pay for both the work at the elementary school and for this unexpected expenditure. That's how we would handle that this year, for no additional cost to anyone.
Okay.
Do we have a built-in contingency fund, though? Or, or do we just?
We don't have a built-in contingency fund. We do long-term planning, and we, and we look at what, what we need in terms of what's coming up, and we try to plan for that as it comes. We don't have any major projects in the, in the near future, unless it's something like this that pops up unexpectedly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Fortunately, the issue with the hot water is happening while school's not in session, which is.
It's an emergency.
A little less stressful than having to have a running kitchen and things like that. We all have that, so. So. So, all right, any other questions on the budget? All right. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the second reading of the school budget as presented? Earl, are you a yes?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Yes, I am a yes.
Just want to make that official. All right, thank you. All right. It was a long budget season. All right, next up, new business. We already did recognition of the track champions.
Wow.
Disposition of school property. So I think we have a couple things there. Will's got something, and I think Jim has something.
Correct. You know, ever since COVID, we've become a school where we have about one laptop per child. And it's not accurate, but if you, if you use big round numbers, think of us as having a thousand students. And if our devices last about five years, that means you're on a replacement cycle of about twenty percent of your devices every year. Which means there's a couple hundred devices every year that are being cycled out of service, sometimes a lot longer. Our policy basically says, before we sell or dispose of this stuff, we have to at least notify the board. So in this case, it's really not stuff that has much residual value. Just going to e-waste recycling to make sure it doesn't go into a landfill and pollute the water. But we're still obligated to notify of that. So that's essentially what this is, is the notification of, you know, a couple hundred student devices, old Apple devices, but not much that really has any value. We have already stolen screens of, you know, to be replacement screens and, you know, little parts we can pick out of it. But at some point, it's, we really don't have anywhere in the district to store this kind of stuff, so we gotta get rid of it.
That's it? No question? Any questions online?
So as you guys know, athletics doesn't run without booster support. And our wrestling boosters have done a great job raising money. And they'd like to purchase some new mats for wrestling, which is a great, great problem to have. But the unfortunate thing is, we have mats, we have storage issues. So we do have to sell our old mats. I talked to our coach today, and he said he had talked to a gentleman who sells mats. He feels like this set of mats, which is definitely, gotta be over twenty years old at least, he feels that the mats would be worth two thousand dollars in good condition or fifteen hundred dollars in bad condition. And he thinks he's leaning towards bad, to tough conditions. So we're asking the board if, if we can explore selling these for fifteen dollars. And the way we do it is we contact all the schools that we know have wrestling and say we had a set of mats that could be purchased for fifteen hundred dollars. If we get multiple schools that want it, maybe we can try to bid on that for some, but. My coach wanted to order the mats today, and I said, "My fear is if we order the mats, we, we cannot purchase new mats, and we get rid of the mats in the gym." So I did ask him to be patient, but hopefully this process can be quick with your support.
Presumably, these are the same mats that we.
The arms that are rolled up.
That, that we purposely put the lifts in the.
Yes.
Right. In the half gym.
Yeah. And these are the ones, these are the ones that are really, they're old and they're kind of rolled up. They're not in great condition, but they have value to a school that maybe has a junior high wrestling coach or something like that. And for our wrestling program, which is very healthy with boosters support, it's great that we can get some of that to the kids.
These mats are much lighter too.
Yeah. So with your support, I'll, I'll stop the process of looking to sell these.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Do we need a special motion for that, or is that just?
Exactly what the policy says on that. I think we just need to be aware. I don't think, I think.
You should just say that.
Okay, well, we can. So, yeah, so I have to say, is the board in favor of selling them for what we can get for them?
We'll start at fifteen dollars if we have any interest. And if we don't, we'll either go over or down.
Yep. I would say it makes sense to sell them for what we can get.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. School Board Delegate and Alternate. So this is the delegate for the Main School Board Association Delegate Assembly that happens in October. Talked about it last year, for those who actually live here, so. So what this is, is it's an annual meeting of the Main School Board Association and delegates, which every school district has an opportunity to have a delegate attend the assembly, which has been done remotely the last couple of years. It tends to help get participation up from all over the state. At these meetings, they adopt resolutions expressing the beliefs and purposes of the association. So what is it that we think what public education should be and what we should be striving for? What we're asking the, through, through the efforts of the board putting in the, and then comes before the delegate assembly, any initiatives that they'd like to see from the legislature that they'd like to have to help enhance public education, support certain initiatives, suggest new things, whatever the things happen to be that come out of the, out of the School Board Association. There, and just so you know, those resolutions for those initiatives and such, that delegate assembly is in October, so we'll be seeing those probably in August or September. So you'll all get emails on it, so you have a chance to review it and provide input to whoever our delegate happens to be. I have participated in that for a number of years now. And Earl was our alternate last year. I was unable to attend each, district only gets one delegate. But you do have, you do have to select your delegate as a board. You may have an official vote on that, so that they can represent the boards. And I would be interested in doing that again, if you're interested in having me do it. But Earl has done it as well, so I don't know what Earl's thoughts are for, for that or as an alternate for next year. Because I think even as an alternate, Earl, if I'm not mistaken, you attended the assembly but were unable to, to vote as an alternate. But you did attend the delegate assembly, is that correct, Earl?
Yep, that's correct. I dialed in and listened. I was able to, I, I remember texting you, or not texting, but messaging you some stuff, but I couldn't officially vote. I, I thought it was a really good learning experience.
It is an interesting experience. You hear a lot of different viewpoints from around the state on some of the resolutions that come out. You'd be amazed how very, it can be something that makes perfect sense to one district. It's like, why wouldn't you do this? And another district is like, well, why would you do this? It's completely opposite, and it, it can be interesting. Some things that have not passed or have gone completely opposite to what I thought they might have gone other years, so. So anyway, that's, we got a little synopsis of what it is here, but I'd be interested in doing that again this year. Or, or if Earl's interested, then there can be a nomination to that effect as well. So I guess what is the, the wishes of the board? And we can ask upon that?
I know that I would like to be an alternate again.
I'll make a motion that we keep the same delegate and alternate this coming year.
Yeah, I'll second.
You okay? Any other input? You okay? So we have a motion, have a second? So all in favor of, I guess me as a delegate and Earl as the alternate? All right? Did you have your hand up, Earl?
If it's allowed, yes, otherwise I'll be abstaining.
I think it's allowed.
Okay, yes, in favor.
Because you're part of the board and it's representing the board, so it's all, all, all good. All right.
Yes.
Yo, yo, where are we on that part of the agenda? Three or four, yeah? Okay. Well, we can do that. If there's, without objection, we can move English curriculum up on the agenda. Well, we can do that. If there's without objection, we can move English curriculum up on the agenda under new business. Because Jen doesn't want to spend her summer with us. So, uh, and Michelle's online too, so I assume Michelle has input, input as well.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to just briefly review with the board kind of the ongoing curriculum work in our district. As you know, um, every five years, the Main Department of Education updates their standards for each discipline. And, um, and we do the work from there to make sure that our curriculum is updated for the newest standards and meeting the needs of our students. That work has gone on, um, this year in the High School English Language Arts Department. Um, I'm very thankful for Jen McCowen's leadership on that. She's an excellent department chair. And we're very, um, lucky to have her and her leadership of that department. So she's, she and her department have worked on the, all four courses for English at the high school. And tonight, she's going to talk about grades nine and 10. We went to the Curriculum Committee with this, excuse me, with these documents and they were unanimously voted on to move to the board level. So I'd ask Jen to kind of share some of the highlights and the work that was done and then be available to answer questions. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. Um, thank you for moving me up. I'm Jen McCowen. I am the department chair for High School ELA. And we've spent not only this past school year, but part of the previous school year reexamining our curriculum. Mainly to realign because the main ELA standards shifted just after COVID. And while we were in alignment with what the standards said, we wanted to make sure that was actually reflected in the standards in our curriculum. But it gave us a really good choice to look at what we're teaching and why. Um, especially given some of the holes we're seeing students come to us with post-COVID. One of the things I'm proudest of is that we took our grammar curriculum, which had been kind of vague. Um, in that every year in our old curriculum, we had kind of said, we're all teaching all the things. And we have now delineated that down to, this is the grade in which a skill is introduced. This is the grade in which it is reinforced. This is the grade in which it is mastered. So we have a set of diagnostic tests for each year and we're just much more closely tracking to make sure that not only is no child missing any element of that, but that we are really using our skills most efficiently. Our hope is that we will see that payoff with our writing curriculum. We have done similar alignment with that, making sure, I'm the freshman teacher predominantly, and making sure that what I teach is directly feeding the kids into what they need for their sophomore curriculum. So we'll have our 11-12 for you in the fall. It is done, but we're, we're still proofreading just to make sure everything is completely accurate. Michelle said some kind of things, but really my whole department was a part of this. We, we worked very hard and very well together. And everybody was able to bring their voice to the table and it was, it was truly a group effort. I'm very, very proud of it.
And if I can add to what Michelle said and to what Jen just said, Jen, yes, it's your whole department, but it's the leadership that you brought, your department.
Thank you. It's more the candy I bring to the meeting. Thank you.
Whatever tastes motivation. Having gone to that curriculum meeting where that was presented to the Curriculum Committee that asked all of these unanimously, recommended to the board. Uh, you know, I'd said then, and I definitely want to say in open meeting, that the, the discussion that I heard, the, the, the level of professionalism that went into all of this curriculum that we're discussing tonight, you know, on other occasions, is, is impressive. It's, it's great to hear the professional, uh, discussion, uh, on how they deliver, uh, the curriculum. The depth that they thought about what it is they do and how they do it, when they do it. And then detailing that out with documentation, uh, which of course Michelle's done a lot of work with, getting, uh, our curriculum documented. But it, it's impressive to hear, I mean, everybody takes for granted that the teachers come to school every day and they teach what they teach, but there's so much into what they teach and how they teach and when they teach. And to get that, uh, put that much effort into it and, and document and detail it. It's a lot of work, but it helps figure out what you got and what needs alignment, uh, what needs reinforcement. And to go along with things as they change, as COVID did change some things. So I, I, I was really impressed. I'd have to say I, it was, those are great meetings to attend and hear the depth of, uh, the work that goes in and, and the professionalism of those involved to that, so.
I would just like to add, I'm also on the committee, but I was unable to attend that meeting, but I did go over all the documentation and I did talk to Michelle briefly and I was very impressed. ELA was one of my dear directions when I was in college. And, uh, I, I really liked, especially the follow-through.
Thank you.
Start it one year, make sure it's going to go the next year and it was really well, well done, so, fine job.
Thank you.
Very impressed.
So, um, so everybody got copies of the documents in their package, um, online because they're lengthy documents. You know, if anybody had any questions for Jen on the English curriculum, I guess that's all we're starting with.
And just so you know, you know, if the board approves, these two documents become our master curriculum documents. And they were, uh, I click a little box in Atlas and they will become public. So what, the part that becomes public are the standards, the content, which is what we say we want our kids to know, and the skills, what we want our students to be able to do. That all becomes the public, um, part of Atlas. And we, we hold that master copy until such time as the standards change and we make these revisions and go through the whole process again.
All right. So, if anybody has any questions, I guess we entertain a motion to approve the English curriculum for grades nine and 10. Do we have such a motion?
Make a motion.
All right, you got first this time.
I know, I didn't have the second.
We have the second.
Second.
We have the second from Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Any further discussion on the English curriculum? All right, hearing none. All in favor of approving the English curriculum for nine and 10 as presented? You need an English?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Earl. So as far as other curriculum, Spanish, the Spanish didn't fall under English language, that was...
No. Spanish.
Foreign language has their own.
It's Spanish.
Yeah, well, no, I didn't know as far as department, why is it...
No, so we have a, a modern languages department, so that would be our French and Spanish. And, um, if you'd like me to, I will highlight that work. I don't think I saw Trenton in the audience. Is he there?
No, he's not.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so if you, I'll move ahead with the curriculum documents then, is that what we're going to do?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll cover all the curriculum now and then we'll go back in the agenda to what we skipped by so that you can go along on your way. You weren't feeling particularly well today, so thank you for joining us.
Thank you for letting me attend remotely. So the Spanish curriculum is documented, um, at the high school level now. Those standards were recently updated, um, to be more in line. So the state of main standards fell more in line with the national standards with five goal areas instead of four. The five goal areas for that, um, department are communication, cultures, connections, comparisons, and communities. And those standards are written in kind of a challenging way. And Trenton speaks well about this and I will try to do my best. But if you look through the standards as they're written, they are written based on a K-12 model. And many schools in name do not have the luxury of a K-12 model. And we're one of the districts, we start our, our language learning in the middle school and it really becomes quite formal by the high school level. And I think that's typical of schools across the state. So when you read the standards and it talks about a kindergarten first grade standard and you see it in a high school document, the reason for that would be that our students are not starting to learn that language until they're later, you know, in adolescence. And if you read through the, the document from the Department of Education, the standards, they do acknowledge that that is true for many schools in our state. And it says, um, to, to the effect that if you've taken two years of a language, by at the end of that, you would be a novice high level, so kind of a beginner, but at a, at the high level beginner. And if you've taken all four years, you'd get at an intermediate low level. So in order to become quite proficient in a language, as you all know, you have to take it for several years. And we offer it formally for four, maybe five, if you count elementary, uh, junior high school. So as you read through that document, if you had a question about the standards, that just kind of explains how they're written and how we kind of have to select from those and make it apply to our situation, uh, in 11-12. Um, I think that's all that, that he would highlight.
Yeah, um, I agree, uh, yeah, having heard Trent talk about it at the Curriculum Committee, he, he did a great job, um, on that and, uh, I think he did, did, um, very well, so, and, uh... So is there any questions from anybody on Spanish? Okay, so hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the nine-12 Spanish curriculum? We have a motion from Ashley. Do we have a second? Second from Steve. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the nine-12 Spanish curriculum as presented? Is... You need an answer, Earl? Okay, thank you.
The last, the last one is technology?
Yes.
Okay. The technology curriculum, we're very excited to have documented this. A lot of the elementary school, uh, documents. It's been a lot of time to capture what's been going on there. You'll notice we took and created two courses in this curriculum, so we grouped grades together. We have a K-2 span and a K-5 span. And any differentiation within that is indicated in the content and skills area. We use the ISTI standards. There are no formal main Department of Education standards. We use the National ISTI standards. You see that we've covered there. And there's brilliant emphasis to move from just basic, you know, computer typing skills and such to computer science skills. The instructor that we have is very good. And we received that grant recently where we got all that robotics equipment and so forth. And she has just delved right into that and attached that to her curriculum and the programming that she's doing with kids in an effort to move our district more toward computer science-based learning. And so you see that reflected in the, in the types of work she's doing with students they follow.
All right. And because Michelle didn't touch on it too much, obviously, and, uh, we're, we're asking our technology people to do enough, do as much as they can with technology in the very little time that we give them amongst the other things that are being taught on a regular basis. So it's, can be a bit of a challenge.
Right, and ideally, we know that things like, you know, word processing or maybe using a spreadsheet, we'd like to see where are that, where are those skills being taught and practiced in the general ed curriculum? Is that happening in math? Is it happening in science? Certainly it's happening in English Language Arts where they're practicing their typing and they're practicing word documents, you know, how to make a paragraph and all of those types of skills. And so as we continue those conversations and look for where those skills are happening there, that gives the technology teacher more time really to emphasize kind, it's kind of the more advanced computer science things. That's the goal anyways, and that's something Will speaks very elegantly about.
Yeah, very good. All right, so, um, do we have a motion to approve the K-5 technology curriculum?
Some will.
We have a motion to Steve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the K-5 technology curriculum?
Yes.
Yes, we are unanimous. All right, um, I think I'll go back to the, up the list where we skipped down from. Uh, I think next on our agenda is the, the title allocations, the federal programs. And I think Michelle's part of that too, aren't you, Michelle?
I am, and I'm going to share a brief presentation with the board. Just to pull it up here. All right, so right now I'm in the process of working through our ESEA for application for titles one, two, and four. Those are the ones that we are awarded. Part of that process is to share with you, the board and the public, um, kind of what our thinking is. I'll show you our allocations and how we intend to spend those monies and, and to just kind of let you know. This is still, um, draft-ish. It's somewhat firm, but still draftish as we await final allocations and any amendments the administrators would like to make. But here are our FY25 preliminary allocations from the Department of Education. You can see what we've been granted for Title One, Title Two, and Title Four. You'll note that we used to receive, and I'm thinking two or three years ago, this changed for us. We used to receive Title Five. We're no longer eligible for those funds. So we deal with three titles in our district. This is just a slide that shows you kind of a history of our allocations in Title One. You'll notice, um, the allocations change from year to year. We are up a tiny bit this year over last year in our allocation, but our salary obligations are something that continue to grow each year. And that orange column there, the fourth column over, is the difference to cover between our allocation and our salary obligations. So that's something that Peter and I are tracking annually and trying to predict and look out into the future to make sure that we're managing those funds in a way that we can continue to meet our salary obligations. Well, I'll start with Title One. The purpose of that title is to enhance students with an emphasis in literacy and mathematics. These funds are applied to our elementary school and our elementary school is, is participating in what's called a school-wide model, which means any student can receive services from our Title One staff and resources because we fall under the category of school-wide. Well, with our allocation, you can see our salary obligations for the coming year. $462,000. Additional salaries and stipends that we have planned for, that would be for things like the Leadership Retreat and, um, substitute teachers that we might have to hire in title. Professional development plans, $8,600. Uh, general supplies, and we set aside a certain amount for homeless. Um, you'll notice right away that the total amount, $481,000, well exceeds our allocation and I'm going to address that a little bit later in the presentation. If there are questions along the way, I, I can't really see you. I see a screen on my screen, but, um, please feel free to stop me. Title Two. Title Two funds are used for staff development. They are not funds that we use on students at all. We use them on the adults. And here are our plans for the biggest expenditures on Title Two. We will be, um, contracting with iReady for professional development in reading and math. The Main Math and Science Alliance, we have a contract for coaching for our science, grade six through 12, and mathematics. we have a contract for coaching for our science, grade six through twelve, and mathematics. My foundations for futures will be some professional development for our upper level elementary school teachers. We're very excited about that, as well as folding in some social studies and science into that as well. You can see here our preliminary allocation and how we have kind of mapped out how we might spend that. You can see what we've got set aside for salaries, professional development, supplies, and the intention to transfer ten thousand dollars of that into Title One. And again, I'll talk about that a little bit later. We do have carryover in Title Two funds from last year to this year. And you'll see that thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars of carryover money will actually be applied to the contracts we signed for the coming year. And if you have questions about that, I can talk to you about it. But basically, I'm not allowed to sign a contract for professional development until our application is approved. And that doesn't happen until July or August. I was very concerned that we would not get the coaches that we wanted if I had to wait that long. So what we will do is we will use our carryover F Y twenty-four to go ahead and pay for those coaches that we, where I was able to sign those contracts and secure the people that we want. The last title is Title Four. This allows, there's a healthy student programming, use of technology and so forth. But every year, we take our Title Four allocation and we move it right out of there and put it right into Title One. We don't do any Title Four programming. Well, if we go back to our Title One situation where where we said we did not have enough preliminary allocation to cover our costs, here's how we're going to make up that difference. There was a sixty-five thousand dollar over allocation need. We will transfer Title Four money into that Title One. We'll transfer ten thousand from Title Two. And we should have about sixty-nine thousand dollars, I'll know at the end of June exactly how much that is, allowable carryover from this year. So you can see when we transfer all that money, we will have enough to meet our Title One salary obligations and then some. Our goal every year is to have some carryover because as you can see, it helps us from year to year. So we're hoping to maintain a certain percent of carryover. Information about our title application and our title programming is on our curriculum and instruction website. And public comment is open from now tonight, since I'm presenting it publicly, through July seventeenth. And if I may, I'm going to take you just quickly to that website. If you click on the link, here's our website. This is the titles page. You can see all the data from our school and so forth on the data dashboard. This document explains again what each title is for. And you'll see here is last year's title project. So I will tomorrow put up this year's title project and open the public comment period. And you're welcome to find it there on our website. And of course, you can learn more about Title One on our website as well. It talks about our staff. It talks about the programming. And if parents are interested in being involved, there's there's all kinds of information here for parents, all on our website about Title One. I don't know if the board has any questions. I know that's a lot, but I tried to give you kind of a brief overview.
It is a lot, but it obviously does a lot of good helping our programs and having those additional resources to meet the needs of our students.
Yeah, I will say that our title, our titles pay for two teachers, full time and a portion of a general ed teacher and four ed techs. So our literacy and math specialists are paid for through Title One fund, so not in the local budget at all. And the work they do with students is excellent. Their entire team is very good.
Anybody have any questions for Michelle? So here are none. Oh, that's just information. We don't have to vote on that. So, all right.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and post on our website tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Get well. Okay. The last thing on new business, we don't have anything to add to new business, do we? Nope, okay. Last thing on new business is the acceptance of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit report. He'll give a brief explanation of that.
So this is the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit report. This report comes to us. It's a clean report. No point, no points. I should say deducted, but there are no points against us. Of course, the audit report, a lot of the functions and what happens with the audit report happens because of the Auditable Office, because that is the business office of of us as well. And so it's a combination of things that happened on our side. It's a combination of things that happened on the business office side. So in this report, and I'll hand a copy to each of you, in this report, what you're going to find are, you know, if you look at the twenty twenty-three numbers in terms of what we had, where our budget was, you'll find information on the titles that Michelle just talked about. You'll see information about other revenues that that we've had. You'll see all kinds of information with numbers that are written there that the auditors work with, that they put in there. And if you have any questions on any of those pieces that doesn't make sense to you, if you've had a chance to review it, I'll be glad to answer those questions for you. But I think the first step is to just start with hand their help to you so you can have it. And it is a requirement that we approve it. And as I said, it is a it is a clean audit. Everything went absolutely well.
So for Ashley is a new member. So we have an independent auditor, as you see on there, Miss Uzner, that review the books, make sure we're doing everything the way we're supposed to do it, things are getting accounted for properly. And we have a history of not having any dings against us on how this is done. So I think that says a lot about the people that do this work because there's a lot to it, paying all these bills when you have a twenty million dollar budget. And actually goes beyond that when you do title funds and other things, actually. So I guess that's the short version of it, that with a clean report as per usual, which is good. So I think it's pretty straightforward. One thing that always comes up every year, just so I'll bring it up, is the accrual for summer, because we pay our teachers, most of them are on a twenty-six week pay schedule. And so in some cases, they're getting paid before we've actually got revenue. So we run, we have an accrual essentially that shows in the negative. But it's, most every school system does have this same issue as does us. And they just needed to mention it. I understand that we do have a a liability that we have to approve for and and account for. So they point that out every year. And but over the course of the year, it all works out, which is why they don't have problems. So if anybody has any other questions at this point, it's all wonderful reading if you need something to look at numbers.
It's pretty heavy duty reading. And if you're looking at this and you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer those questions, but it's a lot to take in. As we said, the auditors have given us a very clean report, again, as they have year after year. Steve, I see you looking at a page. I'm looking, I bet you're on page three trying to figure out what's there.
No, I'd actually jump ahead a little bit, but.
Steve's seen a few of these because the town has these as well.
Because he's a couple of years old, too, right?
Right. This is June of twenty-three, correct. We'll have this year's next year.
Yeah, because they always do, three years after the year is wrapped up and everything gets cleaned up. They look at our bonds, they look at how we do things, make sure you have good accounting practices in place.
No.
Okay. All right. Again, you can always come back to Peter and ask questions, but otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Some will.
The audit. We have a motion from Steve to approve. Do we have a second? Second from David. All right. Presuming there's not any other questions, but I'll ask. All right. Here are none. All in favor of approving the, accepting the audit of the twenty-two, twenty-three audit report?
Yes.
We have unanimous. Great. Thank you. Now, is everything in new business? Next, we have voting appointments. Do we have any additions to add? I know you're in the middle of interviewing and hiring, so I'll check. So we have one. So we can address that individually. This is our physed teacher for the junior high high school.
Yeah, Justin comes to us from MCI, Chris, is that correct?
Warsaw.
Warsaw.
Southern Elementary School up in Itzville.
So.
Junior High.
He comes to us with fifteen, fourteen years of experience. He's very excited about being here to work with us. I had a conversation with him today. He's he's away right now, so he was unable to to be here tonight. He was also unable to meet with me prior to. Usually, I like to meet with with our new hires before they come to the board, but I did have a phone conversation with him. He was the PE slash.
Health.
PE slash athletic director at Warsaw. So he's taken a cut in paying to come here, but he absolutely wants to be here in Winslow. And so we're pretty excited about having him. We've heard some good things about him. He's excited to to become a part of the Winslow organization. And so we're very thrilled.
So with Brenda Beckwith retiring at the high school, I've already watched us move from this junior high position to the high school position, which opened up this position.
That is correct.
So those who might have a question, but I'm going to entertain a motion to approve. Justin Hardy is our junior high high school physed teacher.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Karen. Do we have a second? We have a second from David. Any other discussion? All are in favor of approving the appointment?
Yes.
And we are unanimous. Thank you. Resignations. We have quite a number of them. Peter explained a few of them, some long tenured people that are, in some cases, retiring, some are stepping down from advisor positions. But but so we do appreciate, I'd say on behalf of the board, we thank them for all their, all their efforts in Winslow and supporting our kids and giving them what they need as coaches, teachers, and advisors. And we thank them for their service. And we wish them well in their future endeavors. Some people have been here a long time, so we will miss them. And Peter accepts these resignations already, so we do not have to explain them. So next on our agenda is executive session. We do have, we do expect a vote when we come out of executive session. So we'll go reconvening in public afterwards to do that vote and can finish our, adjourn our meeting. So but for those who aren't going to tune in coming back, August twenty-six at six P M is our next regular meeting. Now we do typically take the July meeting off. So I guess I need to entertain a motion to enter the executive session. Do you want me to read it all, or does somebody want to read it?
I've got a question first.
Okay, go ahead, Earl.
Do I need a different link to sign in, or how is that going to work?
I don't know. Earl, I mean, Will just stepped out, so we will confirm that momentarily when he comes back in. I assume that he, you have your own, I think you're on your own.
Yes, he's gonna have.
Will.
As long as other non-board members aren't in there, all they can do is all be turn off the live stream.
Right.
And put it on slides.
Right, but he had his own link.
Well, Michelle Lane is not supposed to be in the executive session when she should exit.
Right.
And you should be able to see who's in executive session.
Right, and it should be just Earl.
I was going to leave when when the portion of the meeting for me ended, so I can leave now if you want me to.
Yep, we're going to be going into executive session, so I think we're set with you.
I think I break you on the window.
Michelle, have a good evening. And and for those that are watching on the live feed, we'll be back in a little bit with our, shouldn't be too long, with a vote on one of the items coming out and get back to the session. So two items, yes, two items. Okay, so, all right. So do we have a motion to go into exec, I'll save everybody their chance, I'll read it. Do we have a motion to go into executive session according to one MRSA subsection four oh five six D labor contract proposal discussions, ESP contract, and also one MRSA subsection four oh five six A appointment of officials, appointees, and employees?
Some will.
Do we have a motion to that back?
Some will.
Some will from Steve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of executive session?
Yes.
Okay, very unanimous. Thank you all for coming. And I'm sure we'll see you around the summer, but enjoy. Sure we'll see you around the summer, but enjoy.
He's 35 pounds, he's the whole thing.
He just sleeps sideways.
Yeah. With feet in your face.
All right. All right. We're live.
Okay.
All right. So we are out of executive session. I entertain a motion to approve the educational support contract as presented.
So moved.
David's turning.
I'll second.
I can't sit and wait for someone.
All right. No, I don't know. I assume there's no discussion at this point? So hearing done. All in favor of approving the educational support contract as presented? Okay. Earl.
I'm in favor.
Okay. Very good. Unanimous. Okay. Next, we need to have a motion to approve the request to rescind the resignation of the special ed director. Do we have such a motion? We have a motion from Ashley. Hey Earl, do you want to second that?
I will second it.
All right. You look like you're a father. We want to include you. All right. Any discussion? Shouldn't be any at this point? All right. All in favor of approving the rescinding of the special ed directors? All right. Very good.
I'm in favor.
All right. We are unanimous. The next we need is, I already mentioned it, but I will say our next meeting is August 26th. We do take the month of July off unless something comes up. Our next meeting is August 26th at 6:00 PM right here. With that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ashley.
Ashley, her hand up first. She's got to be quicker.
You're second, Earl.
That internet latency is killing you. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of adjournment?
So moved. Yeah.
It's unanimous. Great. Have a good summer.
You too.
Thanks.
Thanks, Earl.
Bye, Earl.
Have a good one, Earl.